I'm going to call to order the January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Forest Park D ninety-one Board of Education. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Lyons.
Here.
Ms. Angelo.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Ms. Tyler.
Here.
Mr. Rummel.
Here.
Ms. Cotton.
Here.
Ms. Wood.
Here. For those who wish to participate, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Angelo, could you read our mission statement?
Of course. Thank you. Our mission in partnership with home and community is to educate each individual child in a safe and nurturing environment. We will foster respect and self-worth, teach skills relevant to contemporary life, and promote academic success and creative expression. We will encourage an appreciation of the rich cultural diversity of our community and instill a sense of wonder for the future to enable our students to become lifelong learners and responsible citizens of the world.
Vision Statement: Forest Park Public School District ninety-one will be acknowledged by all as a safe, nurturing, and diverse learning community that establishes the highest standards for innovation and continuous improvement to achieve academic excellence and global citizenship for each individual child. Ms. Tyler, could you read the equity imperative, please?
Recognizing that systemic bias has plagued our educational system, we commit to nurturing dialogue around all issues of inequity, including culture, race, faith, socioeconomic status, gender identity, sexual orientation, and different ability as they pertain to classroom practices, school and district structures, and policies and procedures. We support actions removing barriers to opportunities that allow children to reach their full potential.
Thank you. And Mr. Rummel, the statement honoring Native American land, please?
We, the Forest Park Board of Education, would like to acknowledge that this meeting is being held on the traditional lands of the Peoria, Potawatomi, Mia Mia, Sioux, and Kikapu people, and pay our respect to elders both past and present.
Thank you. Number four, consent agenda. For the board, is there anything that anyone would like removed? Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Lyons.
Abstained.
Ms. Angelo.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks. Ms. Tyler.
Aye.
Mr. Rummel.
Aye.
Ms. Cotton.
Aye.
Ms. Wood.
Aye. Number five, correspondence? Nope, no correspondence. All right. Matters of consideration from the public? Nope. Okay, moving right along. Number seven, Mr. Jeffrey M. Rolleson, CPA Marshall Evans and P's PC is going to come talk to us about our FY two thousand and twenty-four audit report and federal report. Just kidding, it's going to be Dr. Hubbard.
He seems to be running a little late. He's not here yet. You have the two reports in front of you. One of them is of the federal funds and the skinny one is the federal funds and the thicker binder is the cashes that we have. There were no findings in the report. Basically, what they do, they look at our cash income, all the revenue that has came in, and make sure it's assigned to all the POs and invoices that went out. There was no concerns with any of the practices that we have in terms of are there checks and balances and making sure there's some procedures in place for that. Same thing with the federal funds for the skinny or binder. They got to make sure all those reports are done with the federal government and all the reports were submitted in. Yes.
These are posted somewhere on our website?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know where?
And when you log into the website, if you click on the financial tab, then there's financial documents. They're all listed there.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hubbard.
Thank you.
Number eight, superintendent's report.
Okay. Starting off with recognitions. Want to say what an incredible event. Our middle schoolers were held at the Forest Park Middle School, which competed against our very own Forest Park heroes, the Forest Park firefighters and Chief Lindsay Hunkus. The evening was filled with excitement, including intermission activities, delicious popcorn, and a thrilling match of best out of four that ended in a two-two tie. It was such a fun and memorable experience, and we can't thank our firefighters enough for their participation and enthusiasm. So this is just some pictures here. Moving on to priority number one, learning and achievement. There's an ongoing effort to improve the district's math curriculum and student achievement. The Department of Learning and Innovation will be asking the board in April to take up action on the purchase of a new core curriculum resource for grades K to five. Currently, the math committee is evaluating five math programs, Bridges and Vision Common Core Series, Eureka Math Squared, Illustrative Math, Imagine Learning, Eye Ready, by reviewing each one in terms of the quality and application of the content and mathematical practice standards, access and equity assessment, usability, technology, professional learning, and intervention tools and supports. In late February and early March, excuse me, the committee will provide opportunities for teachers to overview and try sample lessons in their classrooms to solicit student feedback and provide feedback to the committee. At the April board meeting, the committee will share their initial evaluation results with a final recommendation and request to purchase coming in May. Any questions?
Can you remind us of when the last math curriculum for this? I remember middle school. I don't remember elementary.
You want which one? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Elementary for this age range.
I don't know that one. I'm going to look at where they're, because I wasn't here. So I'm going to look at James for this one.
Okay, so Ms. Radler says.
Two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, just for the mic.
Okay.
President, would you like me to pause to see if... Yes. Do we want to invite Mr. Rolleson to come up now that he's here? Okay, sorry. We moved pretty quickly. I apologize.
So, Robert. So my name's Steve Wessel. I work with Jeff. So, yeah, sorry, I'm a little late. First time I've been here, just had a little issue with the parking. Does everyone have the financial report? Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank Robert and Bonnie and their staff for everything they did, getting us through the audit process. Their entire staff is super to work with, even though it can be a lot to go through the audit process, especially for Robert and Bonnie. So it seems like we're bugging them all the time for stuff. So I just want to thank them. So no new accounting policies were adopted this last year. The application of any existing policies was not changed. Formatted the reports the same as it has been in previous years. In our opinion, the financial statements are in accordance with the ISBE guidelines. In what I always do, I like to go to what I consider the most important part of the report. That's on page one. There you go. You have it right there. The unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material aspects of the district in accordance with the provisions of Illinois State Board of Education." That means it's a clean opinion, you know, in accounting's terms, and that's the most important thing in this report, or at least I feel it is. The... And also, since most of the people there have an education background, Illinois State Board of Education has given this school district a four-point-oh score out of four, so four is the highest, on the annual financial report. Okay, so that's... You can't get any better than that. The district financial report's prepared on the cash basis of accounting, which is a regulatory format that complies with the financial reporting provisions prescribed by the Illinois State Board of Education. Also, there was a federal report prepared since a single audit was due, due to the amount of money the federal programs, the district received from the federal programs this year. In our opinion, the district complied with the requirements for governing federal monies, and no findings were reported. Both reports have been filed with the Regional Office of Education and the Illinois State Board of Education and with the Federal Data Clearing House. So, everything's hard done. No, thank you. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them now.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Back to Dr. Alvarez.
Now it's on, I'm sorry. All right. This month, I want to highlight third through fifth grade. And so I have some pictures here. The first ones here, Ms. Bocheck, our reading interventionist, and she supports small group rotations. During her station, she uses the My Focus Reader to address the skill of the week with a new passage. Students then answer exit questions. You will see in picture two, students work in a small group on one of the weekly cold reads. They practice fluency, the skill of the week, and the highlight text evidence. Students then work on the last question together to extend their learning. And then in picture three and four, get those out, oops, three and four, excuse me, partners read the story of the week together after the whole group has read it together. And then finally, we have the last two pictures. Students practice their fluency and comprehension skills in partners using one of the weekly cold reads. Moving on to fourth grade. In fourth grade, Ms. Javier had students researching animal adaptations, and students created infographics for endangered species. For our fifth grade, the following pictures, one through three, are our fifth graders in Ms. Alzak's class during a day-two lesson of the week, where students read the text using the first-read strategies. Notice, generate questions, connect, respond. Each person in the group has one strategy for their job. In the last pictures, that's here, you will see day five of the lesson on first-read strategies. Students are answering questions to reflect and share their learning, and then students use the weekly text and information from the building knowledge library to support their discussions. And then finally, here are fifth graders completed an Ella unit, English Language Arts Unit, on observations as they did compare and contrast on national parks. Their culminating project was to speak to a live park ranger from Glacier National Park in Alaska to provide the college and career readiness experience. So you could see the ranger there on the video. And now, it gives me great pride to bring in our anti-bullying committee, our ABC group here. I got a chance to hear that they... Yeah, let's clap for them. We know that this has been part of our KPIs, part of making sure that we are addressing bullying right away. And so I was so excited to find out that the ABC group was formed. And so now I'm just going to give it up to them.
All right, thank you for having us. Well, the Forest Park Middle School Anti-Bullying Committee would like to take this opportunity to say thank you to the District ninety-one Board members. So thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to show you what we've been up to. This is our first year with this committee, and we are very excited to show you... I'm sorry. We're very excited to give students a voice and empower them to play a role in reducing the number of bullying occurrences that take place in our school. So allow us, please, go through each slide and introduce each other. I'll start by introducing myself. I'm Mr. Ortiz, the school counselor, and I've been collaborating this year with the social worker and the youth intervention coach, which they'll introduce themselves in just a moment. And we've been working together to put together the Anti-Bullying Committee and hopefully reduce that number of bullying that's taking place in our school. With that being said, I'd like to pass it on to our members, and they're going to individually go through the slides. So we're going to start with the vision and mission.
Good afternoon. My name is Gavin Crump. I'm in eighth grade. And our mission is to create a safe and supportive school environment where every student feels empowered, confident, and respected. We also want to prevent bullying through education, empathy, and leadership.
Hi, my name is Alvin Jones. I'm in eighth grade. And our mission is to foster a culture of kindness, respect, and inclusion by educating students, family, and staff about impact of bullying, empowering individuals to speak up and support one another, and creating a safe space where every voice is heard. We lead by example, helping to build confidence in others and work together to prevent bullying in our school community.
Hi, everyone. I am Alyssa Pierce. I am the social worker at the middle school. As Mr. Ortiz said, I've been working a lot with both him and Ms. Kabir, our youth intervention coach. This is a great space for us to collaborate, as all of us work with kids on different social and emotional things. And so this has been a great opportunity for us to really come together and create something, rather than just work with the individual students we do. The first thing that we wanted to show you was the initial survey we put out at the beginning of the school year. Bullying is a rising concern across the country, across the world. And so we at Forest Park Middle School wanted to get an idea of what our students thought, like how prevalent it was in our building. So we sent out this survey in the beginning of the school year. They took it in homeroom. We asked the students various questions, such as have they experienced bullying? Have they seen others be bullied? How frequent does this happen? Where does it happen? And then gauged interest in forming this anti-bullying committee. This data is what we use to create our goals, set initiatives, and really get us going. So we only put two sets of data on the next couple of slides, but it'll show you kind of an idea of where our baseline was.
Our first question was, have you personally experienced being bullied here at FPMs? Out of a hundred and forty-two responses, eighty point three percent says no, and nineteen point seven percent says yes.
Hi, I'm Hayden. And the second question is, does the bullying you see happen most you see happen most in person or online? Thirty-two point four percent say in person, twenty-eight point nine percent says online, and thirty-eight point seven percent says both equally.
Hi, my name is Max. Oh, sorry. And ABC goals for two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five are, one, have monthly initiatives that celebrate kindness; two, raise anti-bullying awareness and how to combat bullying.
Hi, my name is Grace. And number three, provide support for students experiencing bullying, reduce bullying frequency from twenty percent to ten percent based on survey data.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jose Vidal. I'm another staff member here at Forest Park Middle School. Very excited to be part of this committee. So this is just an overview of our calendar. We are still in progress of planning out the rest of the year. But this is all just a little bit of what we did over the course of this current year. We try to meet every other week. Sometimes the staff meet just us. We try to meet with the students most of the time, but sometimes we have to plan some things because students are busy. But yeah, and so we're going to talk a little bit more about one of our big initiatives, which was Unity Day.
Hello, I'm Phyllora Garcia. Students wore orange on October sixteenth to celebrate Unity Day. In class, students were asked to write what they do to help make their school a safer place for their peers and/or quality that makes them unique and proud of who they are as individuals, on orange pieces of paper that were made into chains. The chains from all class were connected into one unity chain, resulting in one long connection that visually represented the power of uniting for a common cause.
Hi, I'm Zaria. Bigger than yourself, anti-bullying committee members plan and initiate this campaign. Each member created one actionable goal to help others and write a positive affirmation that will help them reach that goal, utilizing and transformation columns to display our progress throughout the year. Before winter break, members wrote their goals and positive affirmations on a snowflake or ornament paper pattern and hugged them on columns. Keep a lookout for more as the season and holiday changes.
Good evening, Dr. Alvarez and members of District ninety-one. My name is Ms. Kabir, and I am the youth intervention coach. My role is to facilitate and mediate conflicts and provide guidance to not only our students, but to our staff members and other stakeholders to agree on a solution. Partnering with PBI's team and collaborating with the school counselor and our social worker, my focus is to promote understanding, mindfulness, practicing positive mindset, positive behavior, and restorative practices. Restorative practice is for students and educators to develop and build that relationship, building that rapport with each other, having respect and valuing each other's opinions, hold them accountable and responsible for their actions, and repairing the harm, and allow them to make things right. We encourage students to seek support if conflict ever, ever occurs, find a solution when it's needed, and to practice preventive measures by exercising coping strategies. There are examples of coping strategies are, I'm going to play this, but there's two of them. One is SWAT and one is SBL. SWAT is stop, then walk, and talk to an adult. SBL is stop, breathe, and leave.
Okay, so we were at the library, and we're playing chutes and ladders, just killing some time and having some fun.
Yeah, it was supposed to be this chill afternoon.
Then this little kid, about eight years old, wanted to come play with us.
At first, it was all good. We were taking turns having so much fun.
And then he landed on a chute, and things got interesting.
He was like, oh, no, no way. I'm not going down that chute space. And he started getting really worked up. Like, his face started getting all red, and he was crazy. Yeah, and he was using some language you would not expect from an eight-year-old.
We looked at each other and said, no, we are not dealing with this.
Exactly. That's why we use SBL.
Spontaneous, breed all of us?
No, that stands for stop, breathe, and leave.
Oh, yeah. Best decision we ever made.
We made our way to the puppet area. Puppet area is always a good time.
So we were doing this fantastic puppet show, and then he shows up.
Yeah. He was not great at puppet time either.
He literally took the puppet out of my hand and throwed it at my face.
It's okay. Breathe. Okay, deep breaths. That's why we practice SWAT.
Oh, and that's when the librarians got that flush water and let that kid have it.
No, Avery, we're Panthers. We know better. SWAT stands for stop, walk, and talk to an adult. The boy left with his parents.
Yeah, and we were so responsible enough to clean up after him.
Yep. That's because we're Panthers.
So as you can see, those were members of our ABC committee. And with the help of Mr. Amawi, we would like to thank them with this lovely video. These are just some of the pictures that we have taken, and all the activities and the meetings and the after-school meetings that we did with our committee.
As you can see, the names highlighted are those who are present, all the members who are present. We do have many more members. Let me go to the next slide. So this is a photo of one of our last meetings that took place recently. As you can see, we have members from different grade levels, six through eight. But yeah, this is the Anti-Bullying Committee from Forest Park Middle School, and we'd like to say thank you for allowing us the time to share with you the information that we have for you. So, yes. We'd like to end it with one little catchphrase we've got. Let's say, Panthers.
Stand up and speak up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much to our Anti-Bullying Committee. I have to thank Gavin for this because in the first quarter, when I was speaking with him, and he mentioned that they were developing this, I'm like, okay, let's just see how it comes about. I would like to also thank Mr. Bacon and Ms. Watson, who are here, who are leading this as well. So thank you for that. I can't... Yeah, thank you. I can't say enough about Avery and Najah. They did such a great job. They did such a great job. So thank you for that. And Mr. Amawi? Can't say enough about him. All right. All right, moving on to priority number two, family community engagement. So we hope you will all join us, the Forest Park PTO and District ninety-one, for a day of service Monday, January twentieth. That is a day off of school, but that is a day on of service. It'll be held here at Grant White Elementary School, and we're honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy by coming together to support our neighbors in need. Dr. King dedicated his life to fighting for equality, justice, and economic opportunity. His work in the Poor People's Campaign highlighted the urgent need to address poverty and hunger as critical steps toward a more equitable society. On that day, we will help package nonperishable foods and collect toiletries and small household supplies. On that day, uh, we will help package non-perishable foods and collect toiletries and small household supplies to aid those experiencing food or housing insecurity. We are looking forward to turning this day into an opportunity to live out Dr. King's vision of service and community care by making a meaningful impact. This is our third quarter community book in partnership with the Forest Park Public Library. I'll be reading Mama's Nightingale by Edwidge Dante Cat and illustrated by Leslie Staub. This is a touching story about immigration and family separation. For priority number three, talent recruitment and development. I want to remind everyone as we start the new year that the five essential survey window will be February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. We do have some time for it. I'll be reminding everyone. Uh, please mark your calendars again to surveys for each school your child attends. And the five essential surveys identifies five indicators that we have here that show that will lead us in improving outcomes for all of our students. And uh, open positions, there is a QR code here. We do have some open positions. Um, currently we, they are covered, but they were contractual right now, but we do need teachers. So we have instructional assistant openings, occupational therapists, our E L teacher psychologists, our special ed resource teacher and primary Spanish teacher. So we do have some openings. If anyone out there is looking, please apply. And there is nothing for FOIA.
Are those positions starting now or for the next school year?
We could start them now.
We could start them now. Okay, great.
Okay, number nine, committee reports, board policy, Mr. Brooks, Ms. Angelo.
Uh, we discussed the AI uh, policy. There were some updates, which I did like the parental uh, considerations for it and we have the packet that we are still working on.
Thank you. Superintendent Evaluation, Mr. Rommel.
So we, we received back uh, Dr. Alvarez's self-evaluation using the the rubric that we have. I forwarded on a copy of her self-eval to all the board a couple of uh, three, four days ago. Um, and I I would ask, and it's it's all in the email, but basically I'm asking if you can return it within two weeks so we can compile the results. Uh, I will then share them, or we will share them with President Wood and figure out next steps. But we would expect to be discussing uh, discussing, sharing the results with Dr. Alvarez and the community shortly thereafter.
Number ten, items for discussion. Uh, Dr. Alvarez, board policy six colon four five AI.
So um, just as I was mentioning, AI, uh, we should be reviewing the AI policy yearly to update it with any new laws or to our policy and to keep it up to date. It's it's ever-changing. And so I want to make sure that that just happens around this time that we continue to look at it. Um, the nice part about it is our children are, before even using AI, they are going through like checking in for integrity of it. So I'll share a little bit more next month with our sixth, seventh and eighth graders and what they were doing with AI. We also did receive a press bundle, one seventeen, and has several policies that we already reviewed and changed in the past. Um, we are still looking through them. Um, I'll remind some of the things that have been changed was one was with um, cursive, do you remember that? So that was in there. And there was another one regarding if um, you see anything wrong with a child regarding um, abuse, that a staff member must immediately call DCFS, whereas the word on there did not have the must on there and we changed it last year. I don't know if you recall that. We changed that one word. Um, so there was two items on there that we had just changed last year. Um, and so again, we're reviewing them and probably will put them up for um, action next month.
Um, Dr. Hubbard, the Grant White lease with OPRF.
Good evening again. We do have a signed lease with OPRF. Um, I just wanted to go over some highlights from it. It is a two-year lease, starts July one, twenty twenty-five, goes to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. We do have an option to renew it for an extended year. Um, it does limit the time in the building during the week, Monday through Friday, five AM to seven PM. If they come in after hours on weekends, there'd be a fee for that because we'd have to come and open the building for them. Uh, the rent is for just the first floor, uh, a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars for the year. They will pay equal amounts um, monthly. Other highlights are that they're accepting the premise as is, in as-is condition. If there's any remodeling that they want to do or improvements they want to do, um, that would be at their expense, but they have to get our approval first before they do any of those improvements.
Have they requested um, permission to do any improvements?
No, I'm said, we're setting up meetings to talk about that and discuss that.
Okay.
Forward. So if they bring any of that to, we're bringing to the next board meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Other highlights are that uh, we will take care of the custodian and the maintenance and by maintenance, we mean garbage carryout, lawn care, snow removal, um, and we will invoice them monthly. So we're gonna split the ha- the cost of that half so. And they're also gonna cover half the salary of the custodian, but we're sending them an invoice each month for that. That's the main highlights um, from the lease, if there's any question that you may have.
Um, do we know how many staff members they have?
They said at the last meeting, I believe it was around thirty. And that was because it was a social worker, psychologist, OT, PT, he went through the list.
Okay. More than, oh, not more than twenty-five. Okay. I'm only asking because, and I know I asked this question last month about busing and sort of like traffic. I keep thinking about that though, you know, our community hasn't had students in the building or staff at, at full capacity for a while and so um, I've just been thinking a lot about traffic flow of buses and, you know, staff.
We have had some big meetings here and when we did, the villagers just say, make sure we notify them.
Yeah.
So then they know about the parking around because they allowed our staff to park on the streets as a to our limit.
Yep.
But they don't enforce that when our staff is here. So we have to let them know that we'd be using it at full capacity again. So then they have that back in place.
Okay, all right. That sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, may I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss the employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of employees?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now in closed session. Okay, we are back in open session. What am I doing? Number twelve, approval of consent agenda items discussed in closed session. Um, January personnel board report, may I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Uh, discussion was as discussed in closed session, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Lyons.
Aye.
Ms. Angelo.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Ms. Tyler.
Mr. Rommel.
Aye.
Ms. Cotton.
Aye.
Ms. Wood.
Aye. Number thirteen, items for action, Dr. Alvarez. One, adoption of resolution ensuring safe and inclusive learning environments. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
I'm proud to present a resolution for action to ensure safe and inclusive learning environments for all District ninety-one families and students. This resolution aligns with our mission, vision and equity imperative, reflecting our commitment to fostering respect, self-worth and equity for every individual in our community.
Who wrote the resolution?
Um, I had support with our lawyer, our board lawyer.
Okay, so Adam has reviewed this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Lyons.
Aye.
Ms. Angelo.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Ms. Tyler.
Aye.
Mr. Rommel.
Aye.
Ms. Cotton.
Aye.
Ms. Wood.
Aye. And then I'm going to read the resolution. Um, whereas every child residing in Forest Park School District ninety-one from PK through eighth grade, regardless of immigration status, has the right to access a free public education in the district and the district commits to fostering a safe and welcoming environment for all students. Whereas District ninety-one will continue to uphold its responsibility to provide a safe and welcoming learning environment for all students, preserving instructional time and promoting regular attendance in alignment with its mission to empower all learners to reach their full academic potential. Whereas the Board of Education recognizes the significant role its educational personnel play in supporting the academic and emotional well-being of pre-K through eighth grade students, especially during times of political uncertainty. And whereas District ninety-one has no legal right or obligation to enforce US immigration laws and is in fact legally required to and will continue providing undocumented immigrant students all the same benefits and services made available to other non-immigrant students. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Forest Park School District ninety-one Board of Education that one, District ninety-one has and will continue to welcome all students and their families regardless of immigration status. Two, District ninety-one has and will continue to comply with all student privacy laws, including but not limited to the federal family, sorry, Federal Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act and the Illinois School Student Records Act. Meaning information relating to a student and or family's immigration status will not be voluntarily shared with federal or state immigration or law enforcement authorities. Three, District ninety-one will not assist US Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, in the enforcement of federal civil immigration law and ICE will not be permitted to access District ninety-one facilities or personnel except where District ninety-one is provided with a criminal warrant. Four, District ninety-one will provide resources and support as necessary to its students and families regarding immigrant rights. Five, within thirty days of this resolution's adoption, the district will establish a rapid response team to address the possibility of students being deprived of care because of federal immigration actions, ensuring a plan for the continuity of care and supervision for affected children is in place. Six, the superintendent will oversee communication with staff, parents and students regarding this resolution, ensuring translation into all home languages of District ninety-one families for accessibility. Seven, District ninety-one will empower its educators to engage in age-appropriate discussions of this resolution and provide guidance on available support systems for pre-K through eighth grade students and their families. Adopted this ninth day of January, twenty twenty-five by the District ninety-one Board of Education. Sorry, that was a lot. Okay. Uh, B, Dr. Hubbard, um, recommendation to approve eighth grade student trip to Washington DC not to exceed ninety thousand. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh. Discussion.
Earlier this school year, when we approved the eighth grade trip, we talked about what would be feasible for the next three years and looking at the budget was ninety thousand dollars. And in order to make sure parents, the seventh grade parents are aware for next year, we want to get this out there as soon as possible. So that's why we have it in front of you today. Just asking for the approval of ninety thousand dollars for this upcoming eighth grade trip for the next school year.
So if I remember correctly, we did this last year up to not to exceed. Um, can you remind me what our total outlay was because not all kids went and I don't think it was as high as we expected it to be?
No, it was around seventy thousand, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was less than that.
Was it?
Yeah, it was.
Was it less than that?
Yeah.
Cause I get the correct number.
Cause we had about half the class go.
Yeah, it was only like forty-some kids.
Yeah, I thought it was like forty-six and stuck in my head. I could be wrong.
No, it was like thirty-two. Does that sound right? Yeah.
No, I just, for clarity purposes.
Yeah, at fifteen hundred and four chaperones.
May I have a roll call?
Mr. Lyons.
Aye.
Ms. Angelo.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Ms. Tyler.
Aye.
Mr. Rommel.
Aye.
Ms. Cotton.
Aye.
Ms. Wood.
Aye. Number fourteen, additional matters for consideration from the board?
Okay.
I have just one thing.
Sure.
So right now there is an election coming up in April. We have a couple of open spots on the board. Um, it is, it's too late to file paperwork, but you can still, there's a write-in process. Um, anybody out there listening or watching this meeting, um, this is a great opportunity to learn about the district and survey community. So if you're interested, um, let one of us know. We can help get you connected with the right resources to figure out how to do a write-in campaign. That's all I got.
Um, just uh, piggybacking onto Mr. Rommel's comment. Representation on our school board is imperative for our community and so um, if there's anybody who has an inkling of interest, and I understand most times when I ask somebody about this, they're like, I'm busy, I'm busy. I'm like, I get it. Busy is default. So um, you know, I I I think the commitment particularly for a starter board member in their first term or, you know, year or two is uh, not nearly as much as people think it is. So um, if I am absolutely open to speaking to somebody, it's really important to me that we fill the board um, not just with uh, the right number, but with people who are genuinely interested and I'll be rolling off and may I see this as um, a really great use of the last eight and a half years. So uh, please consider it.
Um, I had, it feels like forever ago, I had the honor of attending the holiday concerts at Betsy Ross and Garfield and I was not really in the Christmas spirit or the holiday spirit and it really was great to see our students up there just having a great time. Um, so thank you for letting me attend that and share that with you. And I attended the volleyball game. Um, I have never had so much fun with a whole bunch of middle schoolers. Um, I'm glad I had the day off. There was music in between. Everybody was singing Christmas carols. There were games. So I look forward to, I hope this is an annual thing. It was really nice. Um, for those who organized, I appreciate it and the firefighters taking their time. Um, anyone else?
Okay.
I just wanted to say really quick, um, I want to send out like positive thoughts to anybody who has family, friends out in California, um, hoping for the best and positive thoughts that they could get the fire under control.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is seven forty-seven. This meeting is adjourned.